I'd like to call a meeting for order and announce that we did have an executive session in order to discuss personal action. So we'll have the roll call. Mrs. Elder, President, Mr. Hauser?
Here.
Mr. Rayzer?
Here.
Mrs. Mays?
Here.
Mr. Muller?
Here.
Mr. Music? Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Dr. George? Dr. Law? Here. Special District Court?
Here with the court.
I do not have a legislative court, but I would like to come back to the board and ask any of our needs for all the firework at time and for the school kicking through the door. Thank you. Education and play, Mrs. Mays, thank you. We'll get more questions for you.
Dr. Stevens, give me an update on kindergarten numbers. At this point, we're still a little fluid, but we're around 230 as of today. We are adding, but not losing it, so that's good. I feel like we'll probably get to 250 at this point. Wasn't so sure a couple of months ago, but I feel like we'll be at least at 250. All right, except. Can I just pull up?
Yes.
Okay. A little more exciting than the enrollment report. I have here tonight, well, hopefully a little more exciting than the enrollment report. I have Tracy Dowler and Karen Lopresti. They are social studies teacher leaders. Tracy is the social studies teacher leader at the Trope Elementary. Mrs. Lopresti is the social studies teacher leader at Mountain View Elementary. Linda Templeton was scheduled to be here tonight. She's the social studies teacher leader at Bagley, but her father passed away literally about an hour ago, so she's unable to make it tonight. But I have these ladies here to talk with you about, we went through an elementary social studies review this year. Remember, we did secondary social studies last year, seven through 12. We felt the time was right to take a look at our elementary curriculum and kind of pull it in line. You remember over the last few years, what we did Storytime several years ago, Language Arts, but just a few years ago, we did Science Fusion to pull the science in, and we also did Go Math to pull the math in. So we took a look at social studies programs. We started our process in the fall just by putting out a call for materials. We looked at several different companies. We narrowed those companies down to two, and we met with representatives from both companies. They came in and did half-day presentations. We weighed the positives and negatives of both companies. We were down to Pearson and Hardcourt. We weighed the positives and negatives. The teacher leaders took that back to their respective buildings. They talked to primary teachers. They talked to intermediate teachers. Talked about what they felt were the strengths and weaknesses of the programs, and we finally made a decision last month, which we presented to the curriculum committee, and I'm hoping it's still there thunder. I will let Mrs. Dowler and Mrs. Lopresti come on out. They just have a brief presentation to tell you what we've selected and a few reasons why. Welcome, Mays.
We're not just speaking in mics, so you'll have to forgive us.
Not your mind.
We have indoor quizzes for 12-year-olds. I chose a slide, and I think you can add something to it, because I think that if we put social studies education as the most powerful weapon which you can use to change the world. I've been here, when the kids ask how long I'll be teaching, I say basically since dinosaurs ruled the earth. Things have changed, but really, they haven't. Social studies really starts with the little guys in primary, learning about themselves and their families, kind of like a target, and then you go out and you learn a little bit more. So by sixth grade, well, Mrs. Dowler and I teach in sixth grade, is ancient cultures. So that's exciting, because the kids are, you wouldn't be interested in ancient Egypt, for example, the pyramids and mummies and stuff like that. As Mr. Franco said, we did choose the Hardcourt series. However, I do want to mention that part of it involved us making a decision with the sixth grade level book. They had two versions, and Tracy and I looked at it closely and realized that possibly we wanted to go with the one that was, there were two versions, a sixth-grade version, almost an elementary version, and a seventh, uh, sixth, was it sixth, seventh? So it was really geared more toward middle school. So we decided with Mike in agreement that we would go to the one that was a little bit more rigorous. So it is actually a little different than the rest of the elementary, but we felt appropriate for sixth grade. Linda's not here tonight, as you know. Her dad's been ill, and then we knew that their class should possibly have been a problem today, and we were very sad that they passed. But we know that one of the things that Linda would definitely say is the tie-in to reading is very imperative. Social studies is a vehicle in the primary grades to teach reading, and of course, that's the way, is the whole way through elementary school. So these are some of the things that she wanted to stress, and the fact that really what we're doing in social studies education is trying to build good citizens. Just like everyone here, you're a citizen, you're involved in what's going on in your community, what's going on in schools, and that's what we want to prepare our students for as well. These are some of the things that Linda know that I don't, I won't go through each one, but if she were here, I'm sure that she would say the reading tie-in is very critical. And what we're really excited about is the ebook component, all the online resources that are now available, that when I started, obviously, we're not there. So one of the things that we have available to us, and I'll talk about that in a few minutes, but we're actually linked into the History Channel, and we can, we can just, it's not like we have to get something off YouTube, and we've got worried that there might be some inappropriate ad that we have to watch. It's totally linked in, and that is such a nice component for us, because our kids are visual learners now. They all learn that way, we know that. So if we can pull more of that in, we know that that's going to get their attention and be suitable for the way kids learn today.
So at the intermediate level, some of the things we were really excited about was, this is on the same platform as A Central, which is our Go Math, our Science Fusion, and our Storytime, so Storytime. So it's user-friendly for students, parents. They forget something, they can access it the same way they access their Storytime proportions, which is really exciting. There's also authentic literature biographies, which is, you know, they'll be able to read about Emperor Pini, they'll be able to read about, you know, Hammurabi. Interactive maps, and there's also an emphasis on academic vocabulary between, that's kind of why we want to be the middle, the middle school level books, so that we can build that vocabulary, so they're ready for it when they go, they have it in writing when they go into junior high. And I wasn't going to tell the story, but now I'm going to tell a story. As we were preparing for this, our kids graduated together. So I said, "How's your son?" "Oh, he's teaching social studies at Gannon University." And I said, "Oh, that's really exciting." "How's Kaylin?" "Oh, she's fine." Actually, she was on her way to India. She's in India for eight months, doing, working on her doctorate, and she's doing research. And she's, I said, "Do you have to leave again? Why are you leaving again?" And she said, "Well, you can thank my sixth grade teachers for that." And I said, "What do you mean?" And she said, "Well, that's when I fell in love with South Asia. We learned about India in sixth grade." And I was, I thought it was just because she watched Aladdin a lot. So she, we just don't know, is it an interactive map that's going to spark somebody's interest in learning in something, or is it the fact that their mother's a social studies teacher? Or was it, you know, a story about Hammurabi, or a story about, you know, the Egyptian, Egyptians? So it's really exciting, so we're looking forward to using all of this stuff and hopefully inspiring some more kids.
Yeah, and one more thing that we kind of thought was important. I mentioned a link to the History Channel, but Tracy brought up academic vocabulary, and academic vocabulary really is across the board in every study hall, but rigor is something else that we're looking for. And we just, we just had Mrs. Dowler this morning, we just did a workshop for our teachers, our elementary teachers, and we talked about the importance of complex tests, building vocabulary, and we know there are a lot of challenges to that. But social studies is that vehicle. When I have parents, it really is hard for me to, to kind of maintain my composure inside, because when parents say, "Well, social studies is not that critical," you know, but if it's that reading, learning about your past obviously is important, but it's a vehicle to practice reading skills. And when you get a high interest level, if something interests them in their reading about that, then that certainly is a good, a good way to pull them in and get them interested in what they read. So these are all some of the things that we've got, other than the visuals, the History Channel thing, streaming videos. There's the Pennsylvania component available. Mr. Franco, we were really trying to talk about the Pennsylvania part. Who's responsible to teach that? And it's, it's an online component that's across all grade levels, so we thought that was great, so they could teach what's appropriate for their particular grade level. And updated current events, and that's daily updated, so that is really a nice component for us. And we know that what we're going to put on is appropriate. That's what's always really scary for us. When you pull something in from the internet, is it appropriate for your 12-year-olds to see? So we know that this is going to be something that is appropriate. And the last thing, Mr. Franco, you may want to address a little bit, but Mr. Nessar indicated, he's the book rep for Hardcourt, indicated that we will be refreshed with updated materials when a new version is released, and we thought that was really important for us. So those are some of the things. Tracy, anything else you want to add?
I think it's exciting, the updated current events, I mean, the world we live in is, there's information, and for the kids to be able to access that, I think is really good.
So if I pull it all together, the elementary curriculum starts in kindergarten by exploring the self, the family, and it builds off of the self and the family to the community, to the United States, and then beyond the United States by the time you get to sixth grade. By moving towards this program, we'll only be getting high-quality materials, so we're now ensuring that students at Mountain View, Bagley, and LES all have the same experience. They've been doing the same ideas, but using different materials in each building, just like we did with Storytime, just like we did with Go Math, just like we did with Science Fusion. Now we can ensure similar experience across the elementaries, so that all students are getting a high-quality social studies curriculum. What Karen said at the end, too, they are about a year or two away, a year is what Steve said, they're a year away from updating their copyright. He assured me, though, that with this purchase, when they update the copyright, they're going to take back all the stuff that they gave us, and they're going to give a brand-new version at no additional cost. So that was important to me. Any questions for us? Especially when it's free. Yeah, that's part of the deal, so. Any questions? Good, I apologize if Linda couldn't be here for that, but I think we'll do it. Most.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. And also, several agenda items for next week for your approval, to approve the down by partial hospital, so hospital, we mentioned some of the letter agreements, that will be an agenda item for next week. And accept tuition rates for the 2015-2016 school year as listed, and that will be an agenda item. To approve two tuition students, one from Ranger State, one from Lake Valley, and to approve an agreement with Westmoreland Intermediate Student Services Agreement. And lastly, to approve an affiliation agreement between Indiana University and Pennsylvania County Great School is very important for hardship. And our next curriculum committee meeting will be on Tuesday, August 16th, at 5:30 PM here on the CSC. So far. Thank you. Mrs. Mays? My answer is a vote.
Yeah, I'm going to ask Mr. Watson, who did his usual presentation. We will have the Treasury Report and payment of bills on the agenda next week, just like always, and then the rest of it is what we do this month.
Thank you, Mrs. Elder. If I could just jump back very quickly to the tuition rates, in case anybody had any questions. The state certifies those every year in May. They're actually kind of a year behind, so they're certified the 2015-16 rate we're approving. The elementary increased by about $405 per year. The secondary increased by $524 per year. The information, it's basically pulled from our annual financial report, that's how they set their rates. Excuse me. And the reason for the increases is our operating costs continue to increase. The majority of the reason they're going up is because of Peasers, and we'll talk a little bit about that later in our budget presentation, but also, our enrollment is slightly declining. So what we'll do is we'll go back and back, build the non-resident tuition students for that portion, and they're made aware of that upfront when they do their enrollment, so we'll talk about that. Ask the board to approve the reenactment of Act 511 taxes. The board is required to reenact local taxes annually. The Act 511 taxes include real estate transfer tax, that generates about $400,000 a year revenue for the school district. It's about, it's a 2% tax. We get a half percent of that. The municipality gets half a percent, and the county gets one percent of that. Earned income tax generates about $3.7 million for the school district per year. Again, it's a half a percent tax that we receive. Per capita, 511, again, it's one of those head count taxes. It's for anybody over the age of 21 who's responsible for paying $5. That generates around, like it says, $8,000 per year. And then the local services tax generates about $67,000 a year. Again, half the $2, which we call occupational privilege tax. The municipality gets 7, the school district gets 5. So we asked the board to approve those taxes next week. In addition, we have to reenact the per capita 679 tax, and that generates about $80,000 a year, and that is also considered a head tax, where individuals over the age of 18 pay $5 per year. So pretty much all of us sitting around the table here are going to be paying $10 per year, you know, the $5 for the 679, and $5 for the Act 511. We'll also be asking the board to authorize the extension of the section 125 cash benefit cap. The board approves this cap annually. Recommendation, once again, is for the waiver amount to be 50% of premium savings for medical dental division with a gap of $2,300. And I just wanted to note that that costs the district roughly $350,000 a year. It's what we pay employees who choose not to elect our health care coverage. If we didn't offer this, many of our employees would take our coverage even though they don't need it. So based on the number of individuals that waived it and what those individuals are actually eligible for, the true cost would be about $1.2 million if they chose to take our health care. So there's definitely, you know, a benefit to offering this waiver, not just for the employees, but also for the employer and taxpayers. So just wanted to know that. We'll also ask the board to approve a natural gas procurement contract for September 2017 through August 2018. We participate in Westmoreland County joint purchasing consortium for natural gas. We've worked with Key Tech Energy for years, sort of as our consortium advisor. They've helped us with electricity procurement, and now that we're working with them for natural gas. Recently, the rates have dipped pretty significantly, making it an attractive time to go out and buy future commodities. And the benefits of participating in this consortium and working specifically with Key Tech Energies, there's nobody within our district, me specifically, that is knowledgeable enough to follow the market the way that they do. So they bring this stuff to our attention when it's appropriate, and I think it's a real benefit. I just wanted to note, in the 15-16 school year, we were paying, we paid $3.11 per decathernet. We are locked in for next year at $2.98 per decathernet, which is about $10,000 a year savings. And what we're proposing, before we lock in for '17-18, is $2.72 per decathernet, which is another $20,000 savings. So over a two-year period, we're looking to reduce our costs by about $30,000 compared to what we paid in the 15-16 school year. So I think the consortium, especially the advice that we received from Key Tech is helping and it's benefiting us. We'll ask the board to approve the 2017 commercial real estate tax assessment appeals program. This would be the second year of that program. Currently, we only offer this program commercial properties, and we've set a threshold of about $30,000. Basically, what that means is if the sale value of a commercial property is $30,000 greater than what the, if it's listed on the tax rolls, there will be, we'll follow along and have some discussions about possibly settling, you know, a rate that, hopefully the two parties can come together on that. As I mentioned, this will be the second year of the program. In the first year of the program, we reviewed 34 properties. There's still 18 of them that are outstanding, but 16 of them have settled, and those settlements will generate between $34,000 and $35,000 a year in additional revenue for the school district. And again, that's continuous, so over a 10-year period, you're looking at about an additional $340,000. The proposed fee structure for interest and price is still the same, it's 30% of whatever the additional revenue that is generated in the first year and the first year after. So they'll bill us 30% of whatever the additional revenue is generated in year one, and then years two, for the remainder of it, obviously, we keep 100% of the additional revenue that's generated. So that brings us to the final budget presentation. So I stood in front of you last month and presented a proposed final budget. What I can tell you is not much has changed from the expenditure portion of the budget, but what we've done, Finance Committee and I and several administrators, we've continued to review, we've made some assumptions and have some changes in our recommendations on revenue fees. But before I get to that, I want to quickly just review where we are at with our expenditures. So what we're proposing that our expenditures will be for the 2016-17 school year are $54,823,844. That's a little over $1.4 million increase, approximately 2.7%. Okay? Now, what makes up that increase are the following things, and that is really small, and I apologize for that. The first one is Peasers retirement, and we've talked about Peasers' skill, a great deal over the last several years. And the reason we've done so is because it has such a huge impact on our budget. So that one budget lineup is increasing by over a million dollars. So if I went back to the previous screen and looked at an increase of about 1.4, well, that one budget lineup, it went up by 17%, and it makes up a million dollars in that 1.4. So it's going from 25.84% to 30.03%. And again, that's state law, that employer of rate increase isn't something we decide locally, it's decided by the state, and we're obligated to fund that portion at that level. It makes up 71% of the total increase. So again, overall increase, 1.4 million, Peasers is about $1 million of that. Salaries. Salaries are going up by about $174,000, or around 1.2%. And we've done a pretty decent job over the last several years of controlling salaries, and obviously, in our service-oriented business here, and a lot of our costs deal with the teachers, the, all the faculty and staff that we have, that's where we sort of invest our funds. This year, we've been able to control that pretty significantly. We have four, at least six and a half employees. Included in these projections, we have, it says two retirements there, but we actually have three retirements. That's just a misprint, I noticed that too late unfortunately. But we have three retirements. We assume we will replace two of those three retirements, okay? But when we replace a more senior teacher or administrator, we replace them with a newer one. There's some savings to be gained just in wages. It also assumes the elimination of four elementary teaching positions. Nobody's losing a job, or nobody's leaving for life. We have one position where the individual's retiring, we have two resignations that we aren't filling, and we are adding a autistic, another autistic support classroom back to elementary. So what we'll do, rather than add a teacher, we're just going to slide an elementary teacher up to that position. And a lot of that is driven by enrollment, okay? Just the numbers aren't where they have been, so we have the flexibility to do that. One thing I wanted to note here, and I know we've talked about it a great deal, yes, we are taking on an additional autistic support classroom, requires us to hire one teacher and two classroom assistants, but what we found is much more cost-effective to operate our programs internally. If we place these students outside of our school district foster are much more than what it costs us to operate internally. In addition to that, just remember, this also generates from time to time revenue for the school district. We have open seats, we offer those seats to other school districts, send their students to us, they pay us the tuition rate. So, and that tuition goes offset costs in a very rich basis and even values. Transportation increases about $100,000, 3%, and that's based on the terms of our existing contract. Special education, we're looking at about $68,000 increase, which is also around 3%. And that increase is based on such as some projected placements that we have for the upcoming year based on our student population. And then other, you know, we have another $75,000 increase, and we've talked about the WCC budget, and it has gone up slightly. The athletic budget has increased per the terms and conditions of the contract, you know, the value of points adjust annually and topics, so what our coaches get paid goes up slightly, and that is really all that impacts our athletic budget. And the athletic wellness, the electricity budget, you know, it's been under budgeted, we need to adjust that to reflect those costs actually have been. Okay, so I want to keep coming back to this Peasers piece, because I just think it's such an important piece for people in our, you know, I know that we all get this here, but for people in our community to truly understand, expenditure history summary, not including Peasers' retirement. So if we flash back five years ago, I'm sorry, we'll look at a five-year snapshot, we'll be at actual numbers for it. In 2009-10, the actual expenditures were a little less than $47.2 million. Again, not including Peasers' retirement. 2014-15, which is the most recent year we have with completed audited numbers, it was a little under $47 million. That's $211,000 for a 44.44% decrease over a five-year period. So again, the point that we're, we continue to try and make is Peasers is out of our control, and if it wasn't for that piece of the budget, I think overall, the management and the administration of the budget has been, has been right on point, and I think it's either reinforced more by, you know, if we look at the succession we've had with just the education and our placements and all of those things, it's not like we're controlling the cost, like we're not meeting the, you know, part of our standards. We're meeting exceeded standards in what we're here to do, so it's good stuff all around. Now, just focusing only on the Peasers portion, okay? I removed it from the flat path slide, but if we look at just the Peasers budget lineup here, in 2009-10, the Peasers budget lineup and the actual expenditure for that lineup was a little over a million dollars, made up 2% of our operations. In 2014-15, again, in those recent years, we have audited actual numbers, it's a little over $4.7 million, now 9% of our operations. So over a five-year period, it's increased 364%. It's gone up $3.7 million. It's very, very impactful, which is not just impacting the greater nature of school district, it's all schools across the state, across Maine, but it's important to continue to talk about it. Now, 15-16, the budget amount for that same lineup, lineup is about 5.3%. It's 11% of our operations. In 2016-17, it's slightly less than $7 million, or 13% of our operations. So you know, if I were to click back to the previous slide, in 2009-10, it was only 2% of our operating costs, now it's 13% of our operating costs. The only silver lining in all of this is we're finally starting to level off, and we've met that threshold. And I'll get to that a little bit later when we make our recommendation. I think that plays a lot into where, why we recommend where we are. Okay, so here's where we've made some slight adjustments. Revenues, $54,823,284, we're proposing a balanced budget, okay? That's also a $1,441,000 increase, or 2.7%. Summary of revenue changes, our local revenue, we're projecting it to increase by $381,000. Real estate tax collections are projected to go up about $165,000. Again, that's based on the county report. The assessed value within our community is increasing by $2.1 million just through natural growth. We're very fortunate to have that. Just that natural growth will generate a $165,000 new revenue for our district. Refund of the expenditures, if you look at our trends, you know, they've been a little bit higher in whose past, so I feel comfortable in increasing it by $111,000. One of the benefits we participate in the Westmoreland County Public Schools Health Care Consortium, and by being a partner and a part, you know, operator of that consortium, when we have good years, we get reimbursements from time to time on, let's say, monthly premium lines, and we can use that to make one-time, you know, non-referring purchases, those sorts of things. So I tried to adjust this budget item to reflect that. Earned income tax collection, you know, under Act 32, all employees are required to withhold the earned income taxes recorded now. to withhold the earned income taxes reported now. That's, that happened several years ago. We went from about three point one, three point two million, now we're up to about three point seven million in collections. And it has everything to do with that Act thirty-two. We've slowly increased that budget lineup year after year after year because we wanted to make sure that we were continuing to hit that, and we have. So we will bump it up about another hundred thousand. But what I will tell you is we might start to level off on that. So, you know, I'm not sure how much that'll continue to grow. It might have a gradual increase, but not as significant as it has over the last several years. State, we're looking at an increase of nine hundred eighty-six thousand. Again, majority of it is from Peasars retirement, because by law, the state is required to reimburse us fifty percent of those costs. So we're looking at additional revenue of five hundred eleven thousand. Ready Learner Block Grant, we finally decided we're going to budget the full amount of that, those funds. When it was initially put out there, it was supposed to be some one-time on reoccurring funds, but we've gone three consecutive years, and it seems like it's become a part of Governor Wolf's budget as well. The funds that they set aside are roughly around a half million. We've always taken a little more conservative approach, and only budgeted two hundred thousand. So, you know, we've been kind of getting a little bit of a surplus from the state because they've been consistent in giving us that half million. So we'll bump it up roughly three hundred thousand dollars to get to where it is projections are. Basic Ed subsidy, looking at an increase of about a hundred and forty-six thousand. Special Ed an increase of about twenty-eight thousand. And again, all we are assuming here is fifty percent of what Governor Wolf has proposed. Again, we're not going with the full amount he proposed because, you know, they're, obviously, everything they're showing on, there's probably still some negotiations that need to occur. But I think we feel comfortable that we will get hopefully fifty percent of what he has proposed for the state. Federal, we're looking at a decrease of about fifty-eight thousand. Again, the majority of that is access funds, and that's based on trend. We haven't received as much in funding way for access funding. And then finally, other, a hundred and thirty-two thousand. So what I, why I have this listed there is what we're recommending to get to a balanced budget is let's use a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars worth of our fund balance, okay? That helps us to get to a balanced budget. We hope to not have to use this money, because we anticipate hopefully getting a little bit more money from the state. Now, in addition to this, I've talked to the finance committee about this. We have another two hundred thousand dollars of fund balance I have designated for one-time capital and non-recurring purchases. That is not reflected here. This one thirty-two would be for reoccurring costs, okay? So go keep that in mind. I hope we don't have to use it for those purposes, but there's a chance that we could. We have historically used fund balance for those one-time non-recurring costs, and that's like equipment purchases, okay? And the reason I don't include this part of the budget is because we buy, it's one and done. It's gone, okay? But I wanted to note this here, because if we don't get the funding from the state, what we anticipate, we'll have to make this up in future years. And I don't want to recite that, okay? Okay, so state allocation. So basically, what the, the first column is just descriptions, you know, basic ed subsidy and special ed subsidy, and you can see these are by tow. The state, Governor Wolf is proposing an increase in basic ed of about three hundred twenty-four thousand, special ed of about ninety thousand, for a grand total of four hundred and fifteen thousand dollar increase. So he's recommending that the basic ed in budget lineup is ten million six eight two, special ed of two million one eight four, for a grand total of twelve million eight six six. What we are including in the budget for basic ed is ten million five twenty, special ed two million one thirty-nine, a grand total of twelve million six fifty-nine. So you can see, we're only budgeting fifty percent of what his proposes. So we're two hundred and seven thousand dollars short, meaning if what he recommends comes true, we'll have a difference of two hundred and seven thousand dollars. If it doesn't come true, I think we're still okay because of being able to use our fund balance to make up any difference. Okay, budgetary unknowns. We talked about this all the time. State funding, obviously, that's number one. We just found out our two thousand fifteen, sixteen state funding allocation in May, last month. So that's unfortunately continues to be an unknown. It'd be nice to adopt something by June thirtieth, but I'm not overly optimistic. Federal funding continues to fluctuate. Special education, you have one special needs student who moves into your district. It could cost a hundred thousand dollars just to place or to educate that student, and that's always an uncertainty. Student enrollment, we could get an influx of students, which could impact us down the road, which means we have to add back a teacher. But I don't know who's correct if we see that coming. No, this is not this one. Okay, so future budgetary concerns. Peasars employer rate increase. As I mentioned, we're beginning to level off, but, you know, your budget for that particular lineup is seven million dollars. That's pretty impactful, you know? Any percentage increase on seven million could impact too. Future capital projects. We know we have a building project coming up, a new elementary building in Leatro. State budget allocation, federal budget allocation, those are both always on the Act one index. You can't just raise taxes where you need to. You have to stay within the index, or you have to apply for exceptions. They're going to a vote or referendum. You know, those are, those can be difficult, are difficult things to do. Early retirement incentives. We tried to offer an early retirement incentive this past year. There wasn't a whole lot of interest. We have a relatively young teaching staff. So being able to pull that card out and, and, you know, offer an early retirement incentive in the future, hoping you're going to get ten, fifteen, twenty retirees is somewhat unlikely. Like I said, we have a young, a relatively young teaching staff. Special education, we talked about. Transportation, sort of, I bundle those together sometimes because, you know, you have a special needs student who gets a placement, now you have to transport them there. That's forty, fifty thousand dollars shot for a van if you didn't anticipate. So we always know that those can be coming. Okay, so recommendation, approve a final budget of fifty-four million eight hundred twenty three hundred and eighty-four. That is a mileage impact of zero. So we're recommending a zero mil increase, and we stay at that seventy-nine mils. Now, I made some notes that I just wanted to share with the full board that we talked about at the finance committee level as to why we believe that this is justified, okay, and that we believe we're okay. So I talked a little bit about Peasars. Peasars historically has been increasing by four, four and a half percent per year, which has impacted us between five hundred and six hundred thousand dollars net in impact on our budget. We know that next year, based on the numbers that have been released, it's only going up about point six percent. We kind of breached that threshold where it's just going to level off and stay there. So that point six percent, the net increase in the district is only a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. I'm not, not trying to downplay a hundred and seventy-five. And when you're overcoming five and six hundred thousand dollars a year, that one seventy-five doesn't look so bad, okay? So Peasars, I kept saying in the years past, hey, you know, we have to keep looking down the road. Peasars is going up four percent, four and a half percent, you know, continually. Well, that's no longer really an issue. We've kind of hit the top of the border. Transportation. We need negotiated contracts. We have a rate increase from two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year. So that hundred thousand I just showed on the previous screen, there should not be there in two thousand seventeen, eighteen because we rate the negotiated rate increase. OED costs. That stands for Undercover Employment Benefits. So when we do offer those early retirement incentives, a lot of times what entices people to retire is, hey, look, they covered your healthcare for X number of years, okay? And, and we have a large group that retired in two thousand eight, nine, that is gone. They'll be off of our books, they'll be all Medicare, and that way. So that's going to reduce that budget lineup by about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year. So we know we have that coming down the road. We talked a lot about the L E S, okay? One thing this board has decided to do is to continue to fund that debt service level, five million dollars can maintain. And it is maintained, and it is included in this budget. So when we refer with L E S and go through and do our borrowings, we've already budgeted for that. That money is in, it's in there, okay? And then finally, the state funding piece. You know, we're budgeting fifty percent of what he proposed. I hope we get seventy-five percent, you know? So I think that, you know, if there's a year that we can support this, this is probably the year to do it. But that is my last slide. So does anybody have any questions specifically on this final budget? Okay. With that said, what we'll have to do next week then, if there aren't any questions, and if you do have any questions, which we now have, call me, email me, stop in and see me, and we can talk a little bit further about it, and get you some more information if you need it. But following, we'll have to adopt the final budget, but also then make a motion for the mileage levy, and the mileage levy will remain at seventy-nine mils. So that's listed on your agenda as well. Then the next item is to authorize the two thousand sixteen homestead farmstead exclusion. The state funding amount that we received is seven hundred and fifty-three thousand eight hundred and sixty-one dollars. It's almost about the same, maybe a hundred dollars difference here or there. But what that means to our taxpayers, it equates to an assessed value exclusion for all L four homestead farmstead properties in the amount of one thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars, which equates to about ninety dollars and seventy-seven cents, okay, with the, in taxes, that your tax would be reduced by. I think that's everything I have. The finance committee meeting minutes are attached. Did I miss anything, Mrs. Alder, that is bringing me to the end of the floor?
Partners in Education Grants will be designated and accepted at the next meeting.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Because we're, we're awarding in July, our next finance committee will be Wednesday, August third, at ten a.m.
Mrs. Alder, I would like to say, just publicly, I will not be here next week, and I usually get connected as, by phone or computer to vote on the budget, because I feel that is important. But I would like to publicly say that I completely support the zero mil requirement to be called as well. So I have somebody else running the show. Facilities operation planning, Mr. Adams?
Yes, thank you. My next agenda for next week will be renewal of two agreements. One will be the early management system, all enterprise, and the other will be eastern elevator contractor contract. And our next meeting will be, I mean, I heard they always have, yeah.
Mr. Adams, student activities and our creation. Unless Mr. Mears says anything, I don't have anything. Community, community relations, Dr. George, which is on the agenda will be the free reduced price, male policy that Mr. Waldy discussed before, the national school breakfast program needs to go on, and the national school breakfast program. And then as an attachment, the Richard Parks and Rec Commission minutes will be there as well. What's more, are you, Mrs. Smith?
On your agenda for next week will be a provision to adopt policy procedures, and the summary of the W I U board meetings is attached, and the next W I U committee meeting will be two to three, and the conference is at seven thirty, we got it.
W I U C T C during offering committee. Mr. Palmer, do you have to take that?
Sure. Meeting minutes are attached, nine point fifty, and the next meeting, W I U C T C, is two point seventeen at seven a.m.
Board policy, Mrs. Alder?
Yes, we have several board policies that we'll be working on next week and drafting with an intent to finally adopt. Many of them are, it says, tell you once again, by changes in laws and other procedures by P S B A. And there is one, use of school facilities, policy number seven oh seven, which has an attachment we should look at carefully. And we'll be looking at that. We'll be adopting those for first reading next week. Also, I'd like to add that I have the usual communicate from P S B A asking us about delegates to the conference where the policy, the platform policy will be adopted. So if anyone is planning to attend, we should know about that, if possible, before our August meeting, so that we can let P S B A know who our delegates will be.
Mrs. Alder, technology, Mr. Palmer?
Very important, sir. Please, you're welcome.
Thank you, Superintendent Representative.
Next week, I ask the board to do the annual resolution, which gives the superintendent permission to realign the staff. I'd ask the board to vote on two resignations. The co-dramatics director of Allison Duda and Patrick Richards, if you recall, they took the position on the will of Mr. Pratt, because he was unable to do it for one year. Approve the on-the-road driver education instructors, which is also an annual resolution. The five names have completed all the appropriate training and paperwork. Next week, we will have two recommendations for hiring. One is the Academy Free Management Team Administrator of the Secondary Assistant Critical, as well as the replacement for retirement as a secondary biology chemistry teacher. In addition, we would ask the board next week to approve the teacher leader position for the sixteen, seventeen school year. Tracy Galler and Karen LaPresty, who are present this evening, have both been teacher leaders for a few years, and will notice they're on here again. Many of these people would keep these positions, but they are annual positions that the board votes on every year. In addition, we'd ask the board to approve a substitute teacher named Samantha Bassi, who is working with some tutoring and remediation this summer, as well as to approve support personnel appointments for cheerleader, pep head coach, as well as the dramatics director, and that's what I was referencing previously, Mr. Pratt is returning. I'd also ask the board next week to approve the rates for the positions that are listed. Part-time secretary, substitute secretary, custodian, and food service employee, personal assistants, classroom assistants, the male delivery person, we have launched such positions in the district, and students from the workers, Mr. Cox and I have spoken about those. Does anybody have any questions about those rates? And also tonight, I'd ask the board, and this is not on the public agenda, but have been added to the electronic agenda, for the board to resolve a resolution this evening to create a part-time, four-hour secretary position for the two thousand sixteen, seventeen school year to support grades seven and eight. So I ask the board if they will be able to support that resolution.
Good move, and second, any comments or questions? Not included from the public census, it's not on the agenda. Seeing none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Not passive, no?
Thank you very much. And in addition, next week, I'm going to ask the board to move on a resolution to approve the reconfiguration of secondary grade levels. As I made reference back in April, the change with the ninth grade beginning school or start time with the ten, eleven, and twelve. So therefore, our high school, senior high school will be nine, twelve, and our junior high school is seven, eight. We will apply to the state to have been part of that change, and so there needs to be a resolution to that effect specifically regarding that reconfiguration. So we'd ask the board to move on that for next week, and then we will submit the appropriate paperwork immediately. In addition, we'd ask the board, we normally have far more hiring through the summer. This summer, we do not, which is not a good point. So we'd ask the board to move to cancel the July nineteenth meeting. The only half our meeting scheduled for July anyhow, and that's a temporary reason. Therefore, we do not feel the need for that. And also, because of the date, the way they call in August, we'd ask the board to move the committee of the whole meeting to August sixteenth, and the regular meeting to August twenty-third, which is one week forward. What that allows us to do is do hiring oftentimes, we're hiring personal care assistants and classroom assistants, not because we necessarily wait for the last minute, but sometimes need to rise as the school year is beginning. So we'd ask the board to approve the resolution next week to change those meeting dates of August, and then we would advertise the July cancellation of those changes in one advertisement through the newspapers. In addition, Mr. Mears left me know that Stearmer Night is official, and it will be Friday, August fifth, at the Trevor Lawrence Stadium, for race, for race weather now. And we all know that from the athletic side, which is, you know, many, many people in the school district, it's a great, great event, it's also a hard work. And Mr. Mears did a great job of hunting that whole thing and getting it arranged. So we just received notifications from one of the regional headquarters as well.
I will speak to you next week, and this will be before me before the night. Seeing your interest of coming, if you consider, I'll talk to you next week.
And Dr. Walden did a nice job of making this involved house for the arrangement of the gifts and prizes. the gifts and prizes last night at the Ottawa Park Day in very trouble. It was great weather. Just to note, we had approximately $4,500 in cash donations from local community businesses, as well as, and in addition to that $4,500, we had many prizes donated that we were also giving away. So you know, total investment in those prizes was quite high, and that's obviously a thank you to the community, but also to our leading of the great job reaching out to them. So thanks to both. I think everyone had a good time, and excuse me, my desk. So on that note, all right?
Me neither.
Thank you. Goodnight.